If everybody could stand and join us to the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everybody. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the minutes of the March twenty fourth, twenty five, regular meeting and March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, cycle meeting. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the employee claims filed with the county attorney for nine hundred and one dollars and fifty four cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month by proclamation.
Second.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Got it.
Aye. You have a press.
Yeah, there should be copies of all three of the proclamations that are on the agenda this morning in your folder.
And John, you have such a good reading voice. I now need to read them.
Bless you.
And I got blessed today. Hey, all before nine. Well, nine o'clock. It is.
This is one. Yep. From River View Center.
Okay. Whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas sexual assault can be devastating not only to the survivor, but also for the family, friends, and community of the survivor. And whereas since no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support survivors and their significant others, and support those agencies providing services to survivors. Now therefore, as the four supervisors in and toward Buchanan County, on behalf of all staff and citizens of Buchanan County, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty five as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Buchanan County, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to learn more about preventing sexual violence.
You did that very well.
Okay. And then we're gonna do the second one.
Is it one on your computer that you have to?
That's it. This one.
Do you want to do the motion first? You want to read first?
Ah, I think I need a motion to approve April as Child Abuse Awareness Month by proclamation and approval of the pinwheel garden.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any simple arguments? Okay, whereas prevention is possible with the right policies and investments, whereas the early experiences of a child impact them throughout life, both positively and negatively. Whereas positive childhood experiences such as loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships play a vital role in helping children thrive by mitigating trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences. Whereas families who receive the support they need before a crisis occurs are better equipped to provide safe, healthy, and nurturing environments lead to children who are safer, healthier, and more hopeful about their futures. Whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations. Whereas prevention of child abuse and neglect can reduce the economic burden associated with child malt treatment. Whereas strengthening families through access to concrete economic, social, and community-based efforts reduces the likelihood of abuse and neglect and ensures children have the foundation for lifelong well-being. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships between child welfare organizations or professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organization, businesses, law enforcement, and families. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, the Buchanan County Supervisors do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty five as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Buchanan County and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Together, we can create a state where every child can grow up happy, healthy, and safe with a hope for their future.
You did that very well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, would you like a photo?
We'd love one. And I guess we've got the sheriff here too. And I think I'll hold up both.
Good thing you're here. Grab a pinwheel. How's life?
I'm in the middle.
Yep.
Ah, pinwheel's up. One, two, three. I'm reading, I'm blinking. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Oh. Don't he just sign that's for you? Thank you. I just get it. Oh, yeah. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next.
Okay. Prove, ah, April seventh through thirteenth as National Public Health Week.
Just want to have some questions about. Looks like. Yes. Ah, it looks like, ah, six and seven are advocating for climate or, ah, the climate change efforts on mRNA vaccinations. Won't really feel that's something I can sign on to. What are your thoughts about this?
This came from the National, like, the APJ, the American Public Health Association. So I did not draft this, but they want everyone to use, just.
Yeah, I'm saying without both six and seven, I think it's perfect.
I would be inclined to agree with Keith on this. As much negative, I guess, negative comments and press that have been coming out on mRNA vaccines. And, ah, the debatable impacts of climate change, we all, we have climate change every year. And we've gone from, ah, having a, ah, Ice Age to now heat and we're swinging back the other way. And climate's unpredictable. It's something I don't think I can really support.
No, I don't either. I mean, I remember that you were saying about the Ice Age. I remember when I was a kid, we were yelling into the next Ice Age again.
Yeah.
So, well, really too like we've got that area pinned down yet.
Go on, go on.
Can you, is there a way to rewrap that? I mean, do we have to use what they've sent out to us?
No.
Can I strike?
Sure.
Comment six and seven.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask about that too. Um, the Public Health Week starts April seventh. So I don't know if you wanted to read it next Monday or if you wanted to just do it today.
No, and that way it's all prepared and John can.
Yeah. That is fine. And yes, I did not fill out the back either. So, and yeah, if that is what you would like to do, that is fine. Um, like I said, this was just a sample that was provided to us that they wanted it to be, but.
Yeah, my handy ruler.
I would just go, yeah, and yes, I can. We dropped them. Fine. Do you want, I'm cutting it out right now.
That's even better.
Thank you. It was just a word doc, so yes, it can be.
Okay.
Would you like a photo with him?
Since you came all the way here.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna look at just another one. So be prepared, everybody. National Public Health Week proclamation. Whereas the week of April seventh, twenty twenty five is National Public Health Week. And the theme is, it starts here, highlighting the importance of making a difference in our home, community, and state. Whereas this year is the thirtieth anniversary of celebrating National Public Health Week. And in the past thirty years, significant strides have been made in public health, including the following public health successes. Deaths due to HIV AIDS have peaked in nineteen, or which peaked in nineteen ninety-four at forty-nine thousand ninety-five AIDS-related deaths. That year in the U.S. have dropped significantly. And anti-retrovial therapy ensuring most people with HIV can live normal lifespans. And prevention tools like, ah, PREP significantly reduced transmission. Smoking rates were towards high as twenty-five point five percent among U.S. adults in nineteen ninety-four have now fallen to eleven point four percent due to comprehensive smoke-free clinics or part of policies, public awareness campaigns, and taxation of tobacco products. Three, childhood mortality, which was at a rate of thirteen point eight deaths per thousand live births in nineteen ninety-four, has now fallen to five point four deaths per one thousand live births due to vaccines, better healthcare access, and nutrition. Four, mental health awareness and treatment with forty percent of people with mental health conditions being untreated in nineteen ninety-four has progressed with increased awareness, parity laws, integration into primary care, which have expanded access to mental health services and reduced treatment gaps. Number five, lead poisoning with four point four percent of U.S. children having elevated blood lead levels in nineteen ninety-four has now fallen to less than point five percent due to policy banning leaded gasoline and reducing lead in paint pipes and water systems. Whereas racial and ethnic minority populations in the United States continue to experience disparities in the burden of illness and death as compared to the entire population in the United States. Whereas a person's health status can differ drastically by zip code due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community context, access to health and food, access to education, and access to healthcare. Whereas public health organizations use National Public Health Week to educate public policymakers, public health professionals, and the public on issues that are important to improving the health of people in the United States. And whereas public health professionals help communities group men, prepare for, and withstand, recover from the impact of a whole range of health threats, ranging from infectious disease outbreaks to natural disaster disasters. Whereas efforts to adequately support public health and the prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness into a health system focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. Now therefore, I, John Kurtz, Chairman of the Buchanan County Supervisors, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the, ah, ah, County of Buchanan County, do hereby proclaim the week of April seventh and thirteenth, twenty twenty five, as National Public Health Week in Buchanan County. And call upon our peo- the people of our county to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to recognize the contribution of public health in improving the health of the people of our state and achieving health equity as the state states it. Excuse me. A witness thereof and witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand this seventh day of April, two thousand twenty five.
I can just change the date on that. Means you are approving it today, but it'll be effective next week.
Something's wrong here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept that.
I can do.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, thank you. That was a long-winded. You think they sent out a pre-recorded one?
I know. That's your over.
Any other public? Anybody want to use a motion?
Well, let's, ah, yeah, come on here.
He doesn't seem to want to help me, so.
Yeah.
She does run away.
But you get in where it's gone. Hook in, yeah. One, two, three. Nobody blink? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Reuben.
Guess somebody waiting in the lobby.
There, I'll get it.
And it's nine fifteen, too.
I'll leave you mind.
You'll have to skip the, um, minor management plans and going to the public hearings.
Okay.
Make a motion to open the public hearing on, um, Josh Coons.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm guessing maybe that's Amber. Amber, is that yours?
Yes, it is. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Morning, Amber.
They just opened the public hearing for the Coons.
Okay, perfect. So, um, we'll just kind of have to do this old school without the monitor. Um, so just starting off with the plat map, ah, this request is located in section sixteen of Middlefield Township. Um, then moving on to the CSR, um, there's ninety percent seventy-six CSR, ten percent five CSR. There were three neighbors that were notified of the rezoning request. Um, the average traffic daily count for this location was seventy vehicles per day. And, um, provided that it's approved today, a private sewage disposal system and well water will need to be permitted for this request. And then should this request be approved, they would need to complete a minor plat. Um, and then I'll also kind of note from the aerial image um, that the egg land to the west has never been owned by the Gaffneys. So combining that small egg piece, um, that hasn't been farmed since about twenty sixteen or so, um, isn't kind of an option, just since they've never owned it. And then I did recommend the request for approval as well. Um, any questions I can help answer?
Amber, that farmstead that you were talking about, that's the one with the buildings and the home that's there? That you were talking about in the aerial?
Yeah. Yep, so there's a little bit of what used to be owned, or what used to be tillable acres. Um, they haven't farmed it for, for a while. They started to plant the trees in there to get those established. Um, but yes, to the east is where the original Gaffney property is currently. Um, they are in the process of building to the north for their new property, Mark and Mary Luire.
All right. And so in this blue, the blue little triangle, that's the part that they have it, right, and that they're buying?
That is the property, yep, that, um, Josh and Christie Coons are looking to purchase and have rezoned so they can build their single-family dwelling to continue the Gaffney farm.
Okay. I like squaring the property up. Makes logical sense.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, do we have any comments? Public comments?
Well, that's our property. I'm gonna sell it to my son-in-law here. So they gotta build a house right across the room from us.
Be awesome.
We're building a house on the north side of the road. Get their kids out of town, love the country. So that's one.
Very good.
And it looks like the staff recommends approval. Kathy, you're back there.
We did.
Okay.
So I would take a motion based on the conditions raised.
Close the public.
Oh, we gotta close the public hearing.
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll entertain a motion, ah, based on, ah, meeting conditions that they, ah, we approved.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yay. Congratulations.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay.
Okay, you got four minutes till the next one. Would you like to go up to the minor management plans?
Yes.
The motion placed on file, filing menu and management plans. Recite Middlefield, section twenty-four, Douglas Rec, Byron Township, section twenty-five, Cook Brothers, L T D, Mooton Township, section five, Benrec, Byron Township, section twenty-five, RJS Ag, Byron Township, sixteen, Tomah Beef Facility, Fox Township, section twenty-nine.
I'll make the motion to approve those.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have time to go over the O B A budget or not?
Five minutes. I think it'll be.
Three minutes.
Three.
You probably need more time than that, don't you think?
Sure. Amber, have your training classes started already?
Um, it starts at ten today. And then tomorrow, Wednesday, they'll start at eight. So it worked. I know it's kind of a juggle, but it kind of worked a little bit today at least.
Good.
We'll be joining Amber tomorrow. We enter.
We got one. At nine twenty-five, can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, it's the public hearing for the zoning request for Clayton's.
Okay, so I just kind of want to note off that here, so with this being an LLC, I did request all three signatures on the rezoning application just to verify and make sure that everybody was aware and agreed as far as what was gonna go on with the rezoning. Um, so starting off with the minor, sorry, plat, um, this request is located in section seven of Perry Township. And then moving on to CSR, ah, this rezoning area consists of one percent fifty-one CSR, fifteen percent thirty-nine CSR, twenty-four percent nineteen CSR, twenty-five percent sixty-four CSR, ten percent seven CSR, and twenty-five percent forty-nine CSR. So quite a bit of a variation there. Ah, there were six neighbors that were notified of the rezoning request. And then as far as the floodplain, um, between the two parcels, because it's split by the road, um, essentially it's just the north parcel that has very minimal floodplain, um, that's located in the one hundred and five hundred-year floodplain. And then the average traffic daily count was fifty vehicles per day. And then should a dwelling be established on any of the three proposed type of surveys, when they do get completed, ah, will be required to have a septic and a well. Um, and then from, for the, what we would call like the south portion, um, there is already a driveway established. But any new driveways, of course, would have to be permitted with Brian High Labor at Secondary Road. Um, and again, should it be approved today, they will need to complete a minor plat for this. Um, and again, I did recommend the request for approval. I will take any questions if there is any.
This is very low CSR ground, so that should not be an issue. And it's a minor floodplain. Questions?
I don't have any questions.
No, no.
Any public comments or anything? Say, I would, ah, take a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the recommendations of the staff on Clayton Brothers rezoning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. I've got several minutes.
And I don't think there's anything we can look at. It's gonna, the other items are gonna need more time than a few minutes.
O B A budget, I don't think. That was too complicated. I think HBS retention pay, we pretty much agree to that, but, ah, do we hear her? Yeah, there she is. Lock 'em up. I bet you can do it in ten minutes or so.
Yeah, I don't have anything new other than what you've been sent. Um, the retention pay was approved by the, um, Regional Governing Board based upon the region going away. May presented it when she was here. Um, the money is, has already been sent for fourth quarter, including retention pay and payout of staff benefits. So if we don't approve it, the money would be returned to the region, which would go to the state. the money would be returned to the region, which would go to the state, and then it would be in a state fund to go anyplace throughout the state.
So we need to approve that so we can retain the funds. Now, this is just to the end of the quarter. And that ends at June 30.
This, yep. Yeah, it will help keep staff here so they don't have attrition.
To finish up the regional duties.
And have they made decisions on what's happening after July 1st?
On the disability access point? That was barely approved at the governing board. What? I mean, it, what it looks like, they're starting to interview their positions, and that will be, I'm not sure who will be the employer, I don't know what's happening with any of that right now, it's still in the maze working up. We had to send a transition pay to the state, or transition plan to the state. So there will be interviews on Monday for the key, the top positions, and then after that, other positions. There will not be enough positions for staff. So there are several other staff leaving in other counties, one here, and several in other counties. So as people leave, there's more of a chance of there being positions, but there's not enough positions for staff. So that's all still being figured out. Any other questions on?
I mean, the retention pay makes sense, you folks are gonna have increased workloads, I mean, yes.
We're, we're seeing that now.
Yeah.
I'm back to Des Moines Friday for the DAP, another DAP meeting, to try to figure out what, what's going on with it.
Yeah, everybody's been applying, but Rochelle's the only one leaving right now.
We're just tired.
Yeah. Um, with the paperwork that we received the last time May was in, this has to be a separate line item on these employees' checks. So with our financial system, we can do miscellaneous. So I've already talked to Tammy about it, and I've kind of given Ashley a heads up on this, but we'll have to set up, because right now we need to pay February and March on this paycheck, which will come out Friday. So we'll set up two line items for February's pay and March's retention payment, but those are also subject to Iber and by the contributions.
Are they Ipers? Because I'd heard they were not Ipers. They don't count as income, does that say they are? Okay. I didn't know, I just thought they said not Ipers, that it wouldn't be counted.
Yeah, this is information that I received.
From Deb?
This came from May, this is whatever handout she had the last time she was here.
I don't care either way, I just thought it wasn't counting as Ipers' income for some reason, okay.
It's not as though you're asking for additional funding in your budget or anything, it was sort of, it's, it's.
There's a potential that we
Yes, we will probably.
Have to do a budget amendment.
Sure, that's, that's.
Because, because of having to pay out, although with staff. Yeah, it's all reimbursed, it, it, the county doesn't, it, it's not impacting the county finances at all. The county doesn't levy any dollars for M H D V, it's pretty much a pass-through. It all comes through the region from the state. So we probably will have to do a budget amendment for two reasons. One, we did not have enough in the budget last year to do the payment to the county. So we have two payments to the county, one for last fiscal year, one for this fiscal year, so because of that. So we pay for indirect costs, rent, utilities, that kind of stuff to the county. Also for like auditor costs, I T, all of that, it's paid from the region to the county. We paid last fiscal years in July because we didn't have enough in the budget. For that reason, and then also because of this, and then payouts of, although Rochelle's payout probably isn't going to impact much since with her being gone, we'll be okay if anybody else leaves all the payout. And then next year's fiscal year budget might have to have an amendment too because of, depending on whether, because of, well, I included payout of staff, but I didn't include a staff possibly staying to do claims because we didn't know that.
Yeah, sure.
Yes. But no tax dollars, just our budget, our revenue and our expense budgets would increase.
So you need something from us to approve the retention pay?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
One second.
You want a roll call on that or not?
Please.
Roll call, Kurtz? Aye.
Weeland, aye.
Obo, aye.
Thank you, thanks, Julian.
Thank you, I'll stay here for the O B A.
Okay. The race is. I need a motion into the public hearing for the zoning request for Cameron.
My question is.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
See, Chris is back there. He says, any questions?
John, did you say that Chris?
Amber, go ahead.
Yep, sorry, did you say that Chris was present for the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect, so I'll get started if that's okay then?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the second time it has presented back to you guys. So again, just kind of starting from the aerial image, taking that one parcel and creating three separate lots. Res zoning to our three residential. The CSR in this area consists of 85% 63 CSR, 10% 5 CSR, 2% 50 CSR, 3% 64 CSR, which makes this a prime location to establish new dwellings, as it's not taking that 87 or 90 CSR out of production. From the floodplain aerial, this parcel is located in the 100 and 500-year floodplain. It's my job to make sure that the dwelling construction remains out of the floodplain area. Or if by chance anything does get constructed in the floodway, that they have to obtain a base flood elevation certificate from the D N R. I did put the conditions on for this request that there will only be one single-family dwelling established on each lot and will be the only permitted use on each lot. Each lot will have its own well water, rural water, or shared well by a recorded agreement with the Buchanan County Recorder. And then each lot will have its own private sewage disposal system. And the applicant will obtain a driveway permit or permit and approval with the Buchanan County Second Perry Roads prior to the minor plat approval with the Board of Supervisors. And then just a few more things. So this information was pulled from our comprehensive land use plan. That kind of outlines the location for this request for the residential area. So it's to provide the low-density living opportunities in the unincorporated areas of the county on non-agricultural lands for individuals for single-family dwelling. Another supportive item is where it's least disruptive of existing agricultural practices and activities. And then also supporting the request is that it's being established along adequately constructed roads and is on marginal or poor agricultural land. And then just by rezoning this area to the R3 residential, it does kind of in line with the other dwellings that are around the area. And then I just need also note for this request that I did receive an email from a property owner nearby that is strongly opposed to anything but a single-family dwelling with no trailer parks to be established. And again, only one dwelling on each property. I feel that the conditions that I had placed kind of in line with what their concerns were. And then potentially that the applicant maybe isn't being maybe as upfront and honest with their intentions. So that is all that I have. Again, when it was sent back to the P and Z members, it was a unanimous passing vote again for the second time. So this is why it's coming to you guys again as it was approved by them. I will take any questions.
Anybody have any public comments? I just need your name and address for the record. Any comments?
We're adjacent landowners to the north.
Okay.
My name's Joanna B S, 1775 Allenville Boulevard. Our only objection is the R3, we would have a problem with the R1. We feel R1 would be more conformity with the rest of the housing units there. And we're afraid that this is gonna set a precedent for other people to start building on less than two acre land. So I guess our, our point is, what's the point have it two acre rule if somebody can get by with not adhering to that?
I'm Kevin Vance, I live same place, and he lives next door, and he's got 2.1 acres, Doyle's got 2.1 acres, Fleming's got 2.1 acres, and Reader's got 2.1 acres. I've got over five acres of two houses. The neighbor to the west has got over five acres and one house. But now you're putting in less than six acres, there's gonna be three, three houses there. So anybody can buy like two acre, an acre and a half land and put trailers out or houses out anywhere in the country? Is what my concern is.
I guess I'm kind of curious about what, what the basis for two acres is.
Martin.
I get, excuse me. I guess I'm kind of curious about the, the basis for two acres for, for one homestead, so I'll, I'll be asking questions about that, maybe not today, but another day.
I thought that's what R1 was.
Amber?
Yep, I just wasn't sure what you wanted me to jump in on. So just kind of touching back to the R1 residential, so the minimum acres for an R1 is, is two acres. Going to that R3 residential allows for a minimum of 10,000 square feet. That unfortunately was put in ordinance back in 2020 when it was adopted that way. So that's why it allows those parcels to be, to be smaller because of that R3. Obviously, I mean, you're looking at a total of five, I think it was 5.35 total acres. So potentially it could only be split in two ways instead of three. Again, that's just kind of how you three as the supervisors maybe want to move forward with it. But the Planning and Zoning Commission members had unanimously voted twice to approve it as the three, three separate lots.
Do you have a basis for the two acres rule? Do you, do you, what, what's the reason for that? Why, why only two, why two acres or a minimum of two acres?
Was that set in place just so they could?
Good.
I guess I don't really have a basis for that, other than that's just what was proposed through the zoning ordinance. And that was adopted in 2020. I guess I wasn't around during that time in the county to be a part of any of that discussion.
Kathy? And I was gonna say, can I, Anne, Kathy?
Please.
P and Z?
Yeah.
One of the things I think was if you were going out and just purchasing two acres somewhere and not have more than, you're just purchasing your two acres. Maybe it's in a 40-acre field and you've got two acres. That allows you to put a residential property there.
And it couldn't be smaller than?
Right, it can't be smaller.
We had a neighbor who bought roughly an acre lot up half mile down the road, and they were refused to build a house off because it wasn't two acres. If that makes sense. I'm just afraid we're setting a precedent against.
Yeah, what are you?
And what are, what are we gonna put on this? Like, are, are they gonna be, are you, are you, I hear the word mobile home, I heard the word that maybe you're concerned that he's going to put mobile homes on? Is that the plans?
Oh.
That is not the plans, just a single-bone house.
Or one house in a construction.
Okay.
Is that, is that enough area, especially with that flood pulling to the back? Is that enough area to get your buildings up?
Yeah.
Dragways and everything?
So why the three lots? Are you even the three lots? Just speculating, I mean.
Just curious.
I just planned on doing one and then speculating on the other one.
So you're gonna essentially build a house and then do, build a spec house and then another spec house? Is that, is that kind of your plans?
No, I was, my plan was to move a house into one lot and then just speculate on the other lot. But it's still open, I mean, Amber's got, she's got it written up right, I mean.
Can't see.
You know, I'm just not buying a two-acre lot, buying five, it's almost six acres down the road here.
Right.
You know, you, you take access to the middle of the road, so it's right at six acres.
I guess I'm having a hard time seeing the two acres as anything more than a rule of thumb, so I, I understand where you're coming from about the precedent and maybe needing to change that in the future, if that is the limitation.
But once you decide on this now, it's forever, it's not just.
Absolutely, yes, sir, that's, that's why we're kind of weighing it on this conversation.
Yeah, and the staff recommended approval of the condition that only one single-family dwelling established on each lot and will be only permitted to use each lot. Each lot will have its own well water, rural water, or shared well with the recorded agreement with the Buchanan County Recorder. Each lot will have its own private sewage disposal system, and each applicant will obtain a driveway permit and approval with Buchanan County Secondary Roads prior to the minor plat approval with the Board of Supervisors. I mean, I see where you're, I see where you're going, I mean, if you have that much land, you might as well try to split it into three, and at some point in time, you might be able to make the other two pan out.
On one hand, this is what I would term very poor core farm ground.
Yeah.
And it is a heavy residential area out there with nice-sized lots and homes. I have a hard time approving it simply because we are violating the two-acre minimum. And Chris, was there a consideration of just splitting it in half, this could be two lots instead of three?
Difference between R3.
No, it's already been through planning and zoning twice, I mean.
I, I know, but we have to prove it, and I'm, I'm hearing
I know.
A lot of the. Resist.
But why have them if you're not gonna go by what they say?
But why have the zoning ordinance that we don't follow?
But we could always do R3. R3 actually would work. And that's what they're proposing is R3.
They don't want to establish that precedent.
It's three stories or 45 feet, whichever is lower, except additional height for additional stories may be added at rate of two feet in height for each foot and structure setback. So I mean, we have like, if we already have a zoning for R3, and it's, it's just calling it a multiple residential district, and they're wanting a single-family dwelling on each one, so this will be a multiple residential because there'll be three of them.
For each, for each lot, though, I think.
But you're saying the minimum on a R3, a small slot is like 10?
10, 10 dollars.
We're just asking a quarter.
66, 66 feet.
Bought an acre of land, I can put four trailers out there?
No, essentially, an R3 is very similar to what a lot is inside of town. It's 66 wide with a minimum front yard of 30 feet back, 30 feet setback, and a minimum side yard of 10 feet, and a minimum rear yard of 30 feet. So it's just.
So that's what we're trying to get away from, we don't want it to be like town. There's no trailer, there's no, I just.
Well, he says he's not putting a trailer on.
Right.
Which is a plus.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason, the staff has recommended to approve it, I don't see any reason not to approve it.
I, I agree, I think that we should approve it the way the staff recommended it here.
Well, that, the zoning meeting didn't really pan out either because we never got no notice but the first.
But, but then there was a second one. We did get noticed.
Right. And they had a bad attitude. They didn't even know why they were there. We said they already voted on it once.
I'm gonna stop you right there because I have been to a planning and zoning board meetings and I know these people and they work very well together. And I've never seen them have an attitude toward anyone.
Oh, Mr. Robinson did.
Any other comments on the zoning request? With that, I'll take a motion to close the zoning public hearing.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would make a motion that we move forward with the Cameron zoning request that staff recommends with their recommended conditions.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, next we'll go to the opioid budget discussion. Thank you, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning.
Two things to talk about. One of them I think is really easy. So if we can discuss that one first.
That easy.
Yeah. I thought you might. Last time we were here, we asked for the three secure medication drop boxes to take out the language for Fairbank Public Housing and allow us to put it other places. At our last opioid meeting, there was a request to purchase. So when they collect all of the meds out of those drop boxes, they have to weigh them and then send them off someplace. And Scott can give a little more information if we need it. Right now they were taking them to the hospital to be weighed. If we purchased a scale, we're thinking it could fit in that same line item. The purchase of scale, they can weigh them out at public health instead of dragging all the meds into the hospital, which I think is just a better idea. The scale was a little over seven hundred and it's like a stand type scale. So basically the money is there. We just want to add, be allowed to add that along with the, the drop boxes.
And that's qualified.
Because it's being used in that same capacity for getting rid of, getting opioids out of the hands.
Are they gonna store that in public health or out in the garage or what?
That was our, uh, we used to store all the take backs up downstairs in our entrance room. And as the program progressed, it becomes a lot every six months. We're gonna store it and move it around and keep it secure. So we have an area out there that's secure. So when we empty it, making them out there.
Are there any annual or repeating costs after this? I, I might, it's a stopper evidence. There's, there's no.
No, it's just instead of having to drag it somewhere else. And the, because the number of meds coming in is increasing, it sounds like there's been good response. The report was that there was, has been good response of getting medication in those disposal boxes. The new one in Fairbank, is that right? They had quite a lot in there already. So with just with adding extra medications, it'll be a, a better way to take it somewhere else. So no ongoing cost, just the purchase of scale.
It'll also help the data points to show which take back boxes are increasing utilization. So right now the drugs had to be weighed by understanding this before going to the DEA. So it was one or two trips to the hospital here. Now we would like to get data points to show what we're bringing in from each community to support.
Different locations.
Putting these in where we may need to increase or empty more frequently.
So this will reduce your personnel time, having to go to the hospital, coordinate with the hospital. Yeah, okay.
And overall risk.
Yeah, and risk of taking med, you know, putting them in the car, taking them there, taking them into the hospital just, yeah. And especially if we add a couple more boxes, which is the potential.
Three ready to go.
Right. And then.
Yeah, we're replacing the one that down by our office, but these are a little bit bigger, more manageable. More functional. One out to public health, one in Winter, and we already established the one up in Fairbank.
And there's a couple other communities that may be interested. It's a matter of making sure there's cameras and all of the.
Have there been discussions for it in Hazelton? I know we got lots of issues.
Yeah. I talked to, um, someone. He was, he's on the fire department and he thought that they may be getting cameras at city hall. So that would be a place to have it.
Great.
Yeah.
And so I will follow up with that discussion. I'm just seeing, but Hazelton and Jessup probably reached out about wanting a box.
And it's possible some of the other smaller communities would be interested at some point. And the more medication we can get disposed of, the fewer meds that are in the hands of people that they're not prescribed for or just the accidental overdoses. So.
The drug take back event, take back event is only twice a year. So obviously having these boxes, it's continual for people to drop them off. But we would like just that data to continue to support the program.
Motion to allow you guys to purchase that thing.
Yep. And it's in, um.
We need a motion to allow you to purchase the scale.
Coming out of line four of the budget.
Out of line four of the budget.
So.
The other one.
More complicated.
More complicated, yes.
As of this morning.
As of this morning especially, yes. So Scott had brought forward a request for a portion of Kimberly, our law enforcement liaison salary to be paid through opioid dollars. Griffin and I were on a call with the ISAC attorney who said as long as we can justify it in our strategic action plan and we have it. She saw no problem with that. Then Griffin talked to Sean, who said as long as the ISAC attorney, who's doing all of the opioid stuff was okay with it. He would defer to them. So we talked about a percentage right now. Kimberly's position is funded in part by the mental health and disability region, in part by the county. Next year, it was to be a fifty fifty split. With the region going away, there was the uncertainty of what would happen. This morning Kimberly saw a question and answer for HHS asking about the law enforcement liaisons. And what they had said was, I'll let you respond.
I think that there's no, it was not clear, but it did not express an intention to fund it. And it, it kind of specified that they would continue to fund crisis services in partnership with law enforcement liaisons, but not specifically the co-response model. So the specific partnership, I, I don't know what they're insinuating is mobile crisis per se, as was available before this position. I don't know, but it's unclear. I'm not.
We're doing so well.
I've not received any communication of that from Foundation Two. So I've reached out to them this morning and part of receiving that. I think right now a request that we've all discussed was to supplement the contact with Foundation Two. But now it seems like there is more uncertainty. It's kind of been a gray area. And now, I mean, it, it was stated on the website. There's no confirmation that funding will be granted for the program. It will continue to be granted for crisis services, however.
Did they allude that they're still evaluating that?
No.
Keep hearing that words. I love it.
No, it was just in a Q and A session. So it's not been like anything saying this is not going to be continued. But it's over, I think the ninety nine counties, it's less common to have a law enforcement liaison. It's very common in Eastern Iowa. And I think the East Central region really prioritized funding it. And we've seen great success in the counties that have it. But if you look at the state of the Iowa as a whole, it is not like a essential position under funding.
It's not one of the core priorities that they have. And what, what hit HHS, HHS had said was that contracts that were in effect in fiscal year twenty five would be continued in fiscal year twenty six, except what they were considering unique programs. They have not yet defined what those unique programs are, what will and will not be funded. When we met, when the region met with the ASO, they said they're evaluating everything. They did express that they felt cooperation with law enforcement, some of the programs were important. But ultimately, HHS is the one who determines what will and will not be funded for the most part. And based on language in that comment, it did not sound promising for that. So.
It stated that the HHS funds, it didn't say the positions are going away, but it said HHS funds may not be allocated to fund them.
So I wonder, wasn't it Johnson County that the sheriff pulled that, pulled theirs out and put it under his wing?
So in Johnson County, the, in Johnson County, the sheriff, they moved that law enforcement liaison from Foundation Two. They hired that individual into the sheriff's department and they did that while the funding was still in place. They did not do that because of this reason. So they did it just because they felt that they wanted that employee in the county, not through community, which is like Foundation Two. In the last month, Benton County, because of their concern that this wouldn't be funded, did agree to hire a law enforcement liaison in the county. And then they would be responsible for fully funding. So what our request was going to be was that opioid dollars because the law enforcement liaison works with individuals with both mental health or brain health diagnoses and substance use. So there's some of the prevention, treatment, getting people to treatment. So we felt we could justify it in our strategic plan to fund a portion of what the county owed, which was going to look at about eleven thousand if we did twenty five percent of what the county would owe. I mean, of course, Scott wouldn't argue if opioid funded more than twenty five percent. It says on tax dollars.
It does. And I, I feel like this position actually deals very much with that, with the individuals that have opioid crises and have, you know, drug prices and that kind of stuff. So.
Yes.
And all three phases.
Yeah.
And because Kimberly works in the jail, you know, a lot of people in the jail have some type of substance use and or mental health. So, I mean, I don't, I, I think it's, the request was going to be up to twenty five percent. Now the request may be to look at whether opioid would fund, could fund more if we want to maintain that position.
Kimberly, if you to evaluate percentage wise, how much are adults and how much are? Is it?
I would say, so something that's unique about my role versus other crisis services, we're all voluntary. But working with law enforcement, I go in involuntary situations. Typically, my highest population is with adults because that's where the calls are coming in. I do get concerns or we'll go out to like domestic incidents where there's a child and an adult or sometimes with HHS or domestic violence situations. But it would be hard to put a percentage. I would say seventy, thirty for adults versus children. The children take more time because you're working with an entire family unit at that point. But oftentimes I encounter people on dispatches and maybe there's a substances issue at play. That's not the time that someone wants to sign up and hop in the car and go get treatment. It's down the road. It's multiple interactions. It's going with law enforcement, saying, hey, I'm here to help. Sometimes that ends in an arrest. I don't have any pull in that. I'm always advocating for treatment. But I think where I found the most impact that I've had in my role is in the jail. Working to make sure people access their mental health meds. Maybe they were self medicating while in the field. And they come in, they officially detox, they're looking at their life situation. So working with jail nurses to get them access to medications is a big thing. And then meeting with them and talking about their overall goals. So a lot of people might sit here for a extended period of time on a possession charge because they can't pay their bond. I, I can't pay the bond, but I can help work with county attorney and probation to advocate for that person for treatment options. And that's where I think I, most of my time in two successes has gone is coordinating care for people who have serious mental illness, but co-occurring substance use disorders.
Kimberly and I meant to went, to go over our current action plan. We have to update it with all the new activities that we're doing. And the things that she or she is doing fit right in. And then a couple of those things that we plan to do for the future, again, they align with our action plan. And when we have prevention, treatment, recovery are the main strategies. And so it was just, we weren't. I mean, we knew what you were doing when we did the action plan, but as like she continues to work with the county and as the opioid funds continues to grow and we keep meeting as the advisory group, we're just seeing more things that we can do. And so that's why the action plan is just a continual document that we need to update.
And it was, it was approved by the ISAC attorney for the use of these funds.
She said as long as, as long as the activity could fit in our strategic plan, which, yep, they were done. It is.
Yeah.
Have they named their replacement for her yet or not?
And that last, the last opioid work group, she had someone on as with her as well. And she said that she was working with that individual. I think her name was Emily. I think there's general, I think it's just reviewing at ISAC.
That's general. ISAC attorney.
Yes. So it'd be easy enough to get that.
Signed or gone.
Yeah, we have a replacement.
I, I can't remember.
How would you track your time on this? Because this would need to be specifically towards opioid funds and those restrictions there. So, what, what are the mechanisms that you would put in place to, to track this?
And I think I will go back. I misspoke saying most of my time is spent in the jail. That's not the truth. Most of my successful outcomes come on jail discharges. When people hit rock bottom and are ready to move forward. Tracking my time, I document right now, what I do is protected by HIPAA. So I document in an internal system, my interactions with others. I do document my amount of time that's spent with people. As far as tracking the direct impact of opioids, that's challenging. It's not common that people are arrested for having hydrocodone or oxycodone. It's typically, an arrest is made for a controlled substance. It's sent to the lab. So I might, my perception might be that they have meth and then it comes back how much longer that there were opioids in it. So it is challenging to say opioid specifically. It's very rare that I encounter someone who says I struggle with opioids. But they truly are ingesting them through other routes. And also people think prescription medication, they don't think it's a problem. So a lot of people come and they say, this is my meth. And it's like, whoa, you're not, you're not getting that in jail or how are you obtaining it?
Yeah, we did talk about how we would make sure we could justify it if it came back to be for an audit that we would have to.
Yeah, even after the fact to say if you got the toxicity, toxicity results a month or two later, maybe there's a way that you can say that, okay, well, at least we can mark this as opioid. We knew that this time on this particular date, et cetera, et cetera. Is that feasible? Is that workable into your plan?
I'm seeing.
I think it, I think it is.
I think the challenge is just that I meet with people before those reports are often even received. You know, they're in, they're going to that criminal justice. But it's definitely data that I could track.
It's just maybe getting that data back to her, you know, like I said, we send this stuff in and it, it's prioritized, you know, some of the stuff, obviously the charge, the degree, you know, we get, do we have a court case coming up? Do we have a trial coming up? They'll bump some of that stuff up. So we get the results back that possessions of control structures and set, you know, we're guessing we send them in, you know, two, three months later, the results come back. So, yeah, we were right. And there is also, you know, fentanyl and with marijuana or whatever the case might be. That's where, you know, we get it back, the officer or deputy puts the information into the case file, then think about, hey, I gotta talk to Kimberly about, about this case, you know, from three months ago to get her that information. That, that, that would be as far as.
I, I know it's been shown that it's very effective having Kimberly in her position. And I know she works with local law enforcement, whether it's independents or Jessup, Fairbank. Are they making any contribution toward?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, and we've been talking with the police chiefs and what, what we did, we kind of set it up through, because it's a percentage, it's through the dispatch costs.
Okay.
It's in the average of the last past three years for calls for services. And we put that dollar amount that we put in.
So that like subsidizes it a little bit.
Yeah. Re-scout. And, you know, it kind of works out good because it gets percentage for that town of like calls for services for Fairbank for dispatch, calls for services. And obviously the county has a higher percentage, independents. And independents has a higher percentage and Jessup and so on down to Fairbank. So it just, it seemed to fit and It just, it seemed to fit and. It seemed to work pretty well. As far as the breaking down of the cost.
And as we, as we move forward with this and we start tracking all of it better, then there could be a percentage greater than twenty-five percent, it could be thirty-three percent.
That's why it was kind of hard to come up with a number because she does her internal tracking and then. We could come up with something.
He was looking at twenty-five percent of what the county was responsible, which would actually be, actually just be twelve and a half percent of her time. And also Kimberly does help with the opioid committee, serve on that and then works with. Griffin and I on, you know, coming up with some of the strategies and implementing them, so she has that time also, that would be opioid.
It wasn't lost on me that you said, uh, you'd volunteer for some of those calls. Does this become a mechanism to reimburse her time for those things? I mean, can you see that potentially?
I don't think you meant volunteering calls. The services we offer, people are voluntary.
Oh, excuse me.
But sometimes Kimberly works with people who the services aren't voluntary because they're under some type of a court.
I think since we, since we got the agreement from ISAC's attorney, um, I, I would make the motion that we move forward with it.
Then give a percentage up to a certain percentage.
Percentage, yeah. The twenty-five percent and then we can maybe go from there if we need to.
Yeah.
And then reevaluate if.
I mean, because of that twenty-five percent you guys were asking for, right?
Yes.
Any other discussion before we go? All in favor?
I will update the action plan and we'll get updated budgets.
And whenever that payment gets ready to go, please let us know ahead of time because we'll probably set up a specific line in the. Um, opioid fund.
Yes.
So that way we can track each payment specific to her salary.
Okay, and can we talked about. Chris, we talked about whether it was easier for you to reimburse Sheriff's Department or to just directly pay Foundation Two.
I would say pay it.
That's what I thought too. Yeah, okay. Yep, so when that bill comes. Once you know. Yeah, otherwise we'll, they'll be back to talk about the position if it's not going to be covered. I think my indication is that May is, maybe the ASO is going to start meeting with providers and they'll know more. Was kind of what I think we heard, so. To be continued.
They don't want to just jump into anything.
They're evaluating first, they want to make sure.
My favorite was. Very good, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I skipped around here, I think we're back to Ashley gets to come up.
Yes.
Talking about our dental and vision insurance renewal.
Fun times, have a y'all.
Oh, yep, I have some handouts for you guys so you can follow along. Yes, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff on here.
But you do have a vision policy.
Alright, so. Just a little background, so I was recently informed by Assured Partners, which is our group, uh, our benefits group. That our dental and vision insurance operates on a fiscal year basis rather than a calendar year, so our open enrollment is on that calendar year. So we had that last fall and then our new rates for January one. But for dental and vision, I was in, I talked to Ryan Bourbon, he's the guy who came last fall. If you guys remember, um, I spoke with him and he said our rates haven't changed in a while. This is just something that happens on a fiscal year basis. Um, if we are looking to change to a calendar year, so something like this doesn't happen again. We can kind of look at that this fall before next open enrollment and get everything on a calendar year, which I would like that. So then we don't have to do something like this. Um, so. Our rates have remained unchanged, like I said, so, um, they will be increasing this year, um, at most two percent, starting July first. It's effective. I will go through the actual rates so you guys can see.
Like I'm seeing like a doll, like.
It's.
Less than a dollar.
Yes, so it's not much. And I reached out and I said, you know, do we have to do this or what does this kind of look like? And he said, yes, this is required, something that we have to do effective July first. So you can see on that first handout, or I know you guys are kind of looking around. Um, so our dental insurance. Here, um, you can see the total is forty thirty-five, so forty dollars and thirty-five cents. For a single dental for county employees. And that's increasing from forty dollars and thirty-five cents to forty-one dollars and fifteen cents a month. And then family dental, the total of that for county employees is ninety-one dollars and eleven cents. And that's increasing to ninety-two dollars and ninety-four cents effective July first. And then the Sheriff's Department, I put that on a different line because per the union contract, the single dental insurance is paid by the employer only. So that forty thirty-five, it's the same amounts, but just per that union contract, that single dental. Yep, so that'll be increasing the same amount of forty-one fifteen. And then the family dental for the Sheriff's Department is the same as the family dental for the county employees, um, increasing to ninety-two, ninety-four.
Looks like each of those dental increases is just about two percent, so.
Yeah. And then for, um, we'll just kind of go to vision real quick, um, that is an employee paid benefit. So here, uh, you guys do not need to make a decision because that is employee paid only, so. For single vision, for everyone across the board, uh, is going from eleven fifty, so eleven dollars and fifty cents a month. To eleven dollars and fifty-nine cents a month. And then that family vision is going from twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents a month to twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents a month. So.
Eight, ten, seven percent and one point four percent.
Yeah, so and this won't, we won't have to make a decision on this due to it being an employee paid benefit. That's just going to be pushed on the employee, um, because it is employee paid. And, um, something with this too, it's not going to be another open enrollment. I, like I said, I talked to Assured Partners. I'll be sending out a notification to all employees around May first. And, um, telling them, you know, what's going on, what the, what rates are changing, decisions they can make or how this will be reflected on what they're paying. And then from there, um, they will, if nobody, you know, reaches out or decides to make any changes, we'll just change their insurance effective July first. But if anyone has any questions, um, I'm in close contact with Assured Partners and we'll make sure this goes smoothly. But it'll really just be a notification that I send out and then I'll go on the backend and change those rates, um, for dental and vision.
Will this give them an opportunity that if they're already on a single plan, but they want to go to family, can they upgrade to a family plan?
So that's a question that I asked Assured Partners because I knew that would come up, which is a great question and, um, we don't really see an issue. Um, with that, however, um, when those questions arise, I will work closely with Assured Partners to make sure that we're. Staying consistent and making sure we can do that. Some things we can do, some things we can't. If someone doesn't have vision or dental right now, I don't believe that they can get it now, July first. That was something we discussed, but if somebody would like to switch from single to family or family to single, that, um, would be considered with Assured Partners. And if that, we have the official go-ahead, then we'll have that across.
I'm insured with them, if they decide to change their plan, if they're making a change in rates, they should have the opportunity.
Yes, and also if some, um, employees are not okay with this change, they are able to, um. Be done with this, uh, dental or vision insurance, they can take that out and not make that charge, they just wouldn't have it through us anymore. And of course, this isn't a decision, we don't want this, you know, but this is just something that happens, it runs on a fiscal year and we can talk to Ryan this fall. Or maybe late this summer, whenever he comes down, um, and we can discuss running all of these on a calendar year basis, which I would like. So then everything aligns with open enrollment, yes.
It's so hard to have open enrollment meetings as it is.
It, exactly, so I'd like everything to run smoothly and together.
To make a, make a motion on is the dental?
Yes, so either the employer takes the extra eighty cents for the single. Um, the employee takes the extra eighty cents or you guys split that down the middle forty cents for the employer, forty cents for the employee. Um, and then that's the same with family, either the employer takes the extra dollar eighty-three for family or the employee. And again, too, the decision that we make now, um, let's say the employer decides to take that additional eighty cents. And a dollar eighty-three, so it's not changing for dental, we can change that come January first, twenty twenty-six. So this is really just from, you know, July to December thirty-first, then we'll have that open enrollment and if we want to change anything then. With these rates and I know with budgets and everything, we can do that as well. Um. So if you guys need time, I mean, we have time, it's what, March thirty-first? I'm gonna get everything finalized, send out notification in May, so then we can be ready and, um, set up for July first changes.
Let's make a motion on it today.
Okay. Yeah, whatever works.
Discussion. Can bounce it off. Look at Chris too. If. We only apply it, it's the employee portion that goes up this eighty cents or ninety cents or dollar, whatever it was. It would not affect our budget we're already.
Correct.
Otherwise.
But you will probably have some very unhappy employees for such a short notice, which we got a short notice too.
Yeah.
Yes, which was unfortunate.
Affecting the budget, this is minimal.
Well, I'm just thinking of paperwork involved and time involved updating all the budgets for.
We were going, and this is just my personal opinion, thinking on the backside of all the changes that need to be made. If we were going to increase the rates, whatever it is, the eight cents. I would truly like to see that when we do our complete enrollment instead of just in the middle here. Are we gonna come July one? Yes, if you choose to have the county pick up the eight cents per employee per month.
It's not gonna affect us at all.
Actually, we'll get a change and we'll go from there. I just think it'd be a much smoother transition with this minimal amount for six months. The county picking up the difference.
And that's the thing about.
Is very minimal.
Yes, and with that vision though, the county does not take that on unfortunately, because it is employee paid. But I think that's a smaller or, yeah, less amount of difference because the employee, uh, single vision is just going up nine cents. Um, and then, well, the family is twenty-six ninety-four to twenty-seven thirty-one, but I would agree with Chris.
I would make a motion that the, um. That the employee absorbs the small increase in the dental.
The employee or the?
I'm sorry, the county.
Yeah.
So the county absorbs, um, the eighty cents for single and the dollar eighty-three for family for dental.
And they'll be revisited when in, when we.
For open enrollment, okay.
Okay, I'll second that.
Do I get all in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. That's it.
Okay, and then vision, we're good there, so.
Very good.
Anything else? You guys can keep those if you want, or I can take them.
For Ashley leaves, I'm gonna open up the public comment and I do want to. Offer my appreciation to all the hard work Ashley done in their new position because she's been a great asset.
Thank you, John, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I would also like to remind all of us that public comment isn't exactly public comment, we're really not able to, um, make comments back.
And that things aren't actionable.
Because, because none of them agenda, so they wouldn't be actionable.
Certainly wouldn't be actionable, yeah.
So, anybody has any, Allison, do you have something? Like, say back there, one patient. Just Kathy.
Kathy Cole, um, I just wanted to comment, I was watching, I think it's Full Measure. Sunday morning or Saturday night or whatever, they had, um. Someplace out on the east coast with a beach, that's a tourist attraction. They put up a nine hundred foot. Um, wind turbine, it has been struck by lightning twice, they had to shut down the beaches for cleanup. And I'm sitting there going, are you kidding me? So, and they said they were supposed to be out, they would see a dock in the horizon. And they're ten, ten miles maybe off of the, the beach and the people are not happy. Just saying.
That's kind of a validation of our actions, I guess.
I, it's kind of what I was sitting there watching, but I was thinking, nine hundred and some feet? They're tall, it's really tall.
Is that above the surface of the water or nine hundred?
No, it's above the surface of the water. They had this multi-billion dollar project that was going on. And it was just, they haven't finished it because the people are like. We thought we wouldn't see these, like a speck in the, in the horizon, we're seeing them. And, uh, this one has been struck twice and they had to shut their beaches down.
Martha's Vineyard out there.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Griffin, do you have something? Chris? Bonnie?
One of the tale of hers, did anybody read the, oh, we have, uh, the court ruling in Nebraska. Where it was, um, a wind company took a county to court, sued them and the county went with it. And it went as far as, uh, US District Court and the judge said that, um, he left very, very, very little room for. The, um, the lawsuit to go forward because he said there was no law in Nebraska. That stopped the county from saying, no, you cannot come in here, uh, and there was no federal law that said that either. And so he stood on the side of the county.
And that was partly because there wasn't a public purpose to it, if I remember reading that article, but.
Okay, yeah, it was, I, I read it a couple of weeks ago and somehow I'm a little foggy on it too.
So, precedent has been set then, if somebody tries to.
Yeah.
Bring it back forward into the Iowa Legislature.
Yeah, it does, precedent has been set.
I didn't know that. Yeah, thanks for that.
And it sounds like they're going to bring that back up on a state level.
That deserves punishment.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Ralph, I think you had something, didn't you?
That's my knowledge.
Oh. Carry that around like a briefcase?
I'm just gonna talk to you guys now.
Oh, you do it now, that way Mr. Kloss bought us here and he's a big guy.
Is it new to you?
Yeah.
My, my question was to quote. I acquired this here. From Carol Kloss. And this is a pictures that were taken of every courthouse. In the state of Iowa. And they cut it out. And as you can see, it does form the shape of Iowa and I was wondering if. You guys would be interested in displaying this in the courthouse, just as something when people are waiting out there. For, for, for people to look at.
That's like Chris's office.
And, and, and compare, you know, all the different courthouses. And if, if you guys are interested, uh, Leanne and I will just donate it to the county and. And if you do want it, I will take and have a little brass plaque or something, you know, to put on the bottom of it.
Sure.
Donated by Leanne Ralph Moore.
Yeah.
That's amazing, thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you guys are in favor of this, I will leave it here and not take it home with me.
Yeah.
And it is your responsibility to get it home.
We want to get a picture of it.
Oh, you want to get a picture of it?
Yeah.
If you guys want.
Make sure Ralph's behind it.
Yeah, cover up his, his stomach.
Well, and if you never really studied the photos of the, uh. Iowa courthouses, they're beautiful structures. And a lot of them are all historical buildings.
But I, I just think it's, it gives a good idea of all the different things and being formed in the state of Iowa and everything, I thought it would be a nice addition.
Ralph, why don't you grab another and, uh, so they can hold up just. Way on the low. Yeah, one, two, big smiles, some blinking, thank you, thank you, good job, Ralph.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph, I appreciate it. Not break it. Any other public comment? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Alright, thank you.